Welcome to the City of Le Mans, the University Council meeting. I would like to remind everyone to please silence your subjects. Thank you. The clerk will you please call the role of the City Council member to go on the record as an extended?
Councilmember Mendoza? Here. Here. Councilmember Laverne?
Hello, good evening everybody, Councilmember Laverne, present.
Councilmember Snow?
Here.
Mayor Forten Gassil?
Here.
Mayor Gassil?
Here.
I would like to ask Councilmember Laverne to do his report.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the great holiday for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes in the agenda?
As I see no hands at this time, Councilmember Laverne has requested item one B, those payment demands to be pulled from the calendar is item will be considered following item number five. We do have a proclamation this evening and I'm actually pretty surprised in it. And this proclamation is to proclaim April twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three as Arbor Day. Arbor Day is an important community tradition that celebrates trees and their many benefits. Celebrating Arbor Day is one of four annual requirements of the Arbor Day Foundation's Tree City USA program, which is what the City of Le Mans is a part of. Tree City USA is a national program that is entered locally by state officers every by a framework of community forestry facilities across America. The Tree City USA standards include one, establishing a board or department to be accountable for the tree maintenance of all trees in public spaces, establishing ordinances and policies for tree care and protection in the city. The third standard is to have a minimum budget of at least two dollars per capita for tree maintenance and having the Arbor Day celebration. Recognizing Arbor Day is a great way to show our commitment to tree care and opportunity to educate the community about the importance of tree resources and the value of sustainable tree management. Now, we do have a proclamation here and I'm going to go ahead and read some other whereas's here just so that everyone is aware of what this means. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, based early morbid proposed to the Nebraska Board of Architecture that a special day will be set aside for the planting of trees. Whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was the first observed with the planting of more than one million trees in Nebraska. And Arbor Day is celebrated nationally the last Friday in April to encourage Americans to maintain and replenish our country's orchards and woodlands. And trees provide shade and beauty to homes, neighborhoods, and communities. They increase property values, enhance economic vitality for business areas, beautify our community, and are enjoyed by everyone. And trees can reduce the erosion and prevention of topsoil by wind and water, lower heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, reduce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. Trees decorate our landscape with rich color textures and shapes, and they provide vital sustainability to our ecosystem by improving water and air quality, provide habitats for animals and plant life. Trees also prevent flooding and erosion. And Le Mans trees are highly regarded and valued by the community and wherever they are planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Therefore, I request that the City of Le Mans, California, and the entire City Council hereby proclaim April twenty-eighth as Arbor Day in the City of Le Mans. So I have this beautiful proclamation and so I'd like to know who will be the wonderful speaker of this proclamation coming up. We will take a photo real quick. And so if you'll drive me right in front of the podium and I will ask our council members to join us as well.
Thank you, Mayor, for the proclamation and for those in the audience, just a little background information. So the city is a Tree City USA city, which is, you know, pretty difficult to obtain. As Mayor mentioned, to be a City USA, you have to be four standards and one of those standards is dedicating two dollars per capita. So you look at Le Mans population is about twenty-five thousand. So we have to commit approximately fifty thousand dollars in tree maintenance. The city has approximately fourteen hundred trees, public trees that the city maintains with a value in millions. So if you look at, you know, trees as an asset, just like any other type of asset in the community, you know, they do require maintenance and care and replantings when one goes down to improve disease urban canopy. To celebrate Arbor Day, we'll be celebrating it a week earlier, but I invite you, those in the audience, to attend our Arbor Day celebration, which will be April twenty-second, Saturday, April twenty-second, at Trudanza Park, nine AM to twelve PM. We'll have some booths, educational exhibits in celebration of Arbor Day. There are flyers out in the lobby here and we hope to see everyone there. Thank you.
Hi, thank you so much, Mr. Mofia. Next, we'll move on to our general public comment portion of the meeting. During the general public comment portion of this meeting, the public may express their concerns pertaining to an item or items on the agenda tonight. Please note that according to state law, the City Council may not be permitted to respond to any comments expressed by the public. If appropriate, staff will be directed to follow up with speakers or the topic may be brought to the City Council for consideration at a future date. Third, Le Mans Municipal Code Chapter two point one four point one five zero. All remarks must be addressed to the council as a body and not any individual council member. Each people will have a maximum of three minutes. When speaking, please observe the green, yellow, and red light timer at the podium. The red light indicates that it is time for the next speaker to approach the podium and begin speaking. I do have a speaker slot here. And I'll turn this over to John L. Wood. He may approach the podium.
John L. Wood. First of all, everybody isn't aware of it or is aware of it. But today is the day that fellow fellow builders die. We are going digital with our money. So it's not the strongest currency in the world anymore. We're talking to the Chinese and Russians because they all have, they both have digital money. They'll be able to track all your transactions. You won't be able to go anywhere unless you have some type of ID that has your account number on it. You'll be paid by your account number. You won't have cash by anything. So don't know who you're doing business with and, you know, it's all because of Uncle Mike. He started it. You shouldn't Uncle Mike it. That's my original name. All you Democrats could like, I.
Thank you so very much and that will complete our public comment portion of the meeting. I will move on. Have we just received another speaker slot? Or public comment?
Yes.
And it's Julia, the...
It's hard to... You just...
Yeah, we... Please approach the podium and you will have three minutes.
Hello, everybody. I just wanted to talk to you guys quickly about Le Mans Pickleball because we have a couple of little obstacles in our future. And so I wanted to just talk to you guys about it now before it gets to that point. But two things. One, near the end of summer, Mark Horton, who currently runs his FEW Sports Leagues around there and he's the one who usually typically opens up the doors for us and allows our pickleballers to use bathrooms. He's not going to be available for about three months. I think it's September, August, maybe November. I can give those dates for you if you're interested. And so we're looking for someone to open up the bathroom for those two hours or open up the rec center for those two hours, just so anyone who comes run to the restroom, because we have a lot of seniors though. At least some can hold their lunch for that long. And the other thing I wanted to bring up was that also the pickleball club is a little bit at risk. And this is for everyone on council and everyone who is at home who cares about Le Mans Pickleball. Right now, me and a couple of volunteers were really, really hard every single week to set up those courts and we use tape to do so. And it's just not a very sustainable option. Tape is bad for the environment. It's very expensive and it's just very labor intensive. So I worry about if something happens to me or I have a change in my life circumstance, I won't be able to host this club as I've been able to do so. Now, I know that the property is not in the city's jurisdiction, I don't think. It's the school board. So really, I'm just asking for you guys to use your relationships and maybe talk to them and say, hey, can you talk to Jules? She needs a little help here. She, she has money to paint the lines. And the club is at risk basically if we don't get some help there. I want to beautify the area. I want to bring something really, really cool to our city. But I just, I just need a little help. So that's all. Thanks, guys.
Thank you so very much and that will complete our public comment portion of the meeting. I'm moving on to the consent calendar. As we have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar with the exception of item one B. Almost approval.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second and we'll ask our deputy clerk to call the role.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Aye.
Councilmember Laverne?
Councilmember Laverne, no.
Councilmember Snow?
Aye.
Mayor Forten Gassil?
Aye.
Mayor Gassil?
Aye.
At motion, hear response.
Thank you. Item number two is the twenty twenty-two General Plan Annual Progress Report. I'll ask our city clerk to have all the notices required by law that have been given and if the complete file of the specific correspondence and other documents have been provided.
All of the legal notices have been required.
Thank you so very much. Now, I will turn it over to the city attorney to ask council if they have any disclosures, conflicts, or interests relating to this particular item. I would only ask that the City Council disclose any expedited communications or conflicts of interest that you might have with this item. Can we go through them one by one and affirmatively say whether or not you have any expedited communications or whether or any conflicts of interest? Thank you so very much. I'll take in with Councilmember Mendoza?
No.
Councilmember Laverne? No conflicts? Councilmembers, no?
No conflicts?
Mayor Forten Gassil?
No.
And I did not have any conflicts for this particular item. And so now it is time to open the public hearing and I'll introduce Bill Tropic, the interim community development manager, to present his staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. It's nice to be back working for the City of Le Mans to put this deal on. I received a very much appreciated comment from a very thorough reader around the council that regarding the Connect Main Street program. And in this document, it talks about a four billion dollar incentive program grant that was worth design and construction of bases one through three of the main street projects. And we will fix that, fix that up and make sure that the design and construction in the document be fully implemented. Just wanted to pass that along and appreciate the comment. At that time, I introduced our assistant planner, Spencer Richard. She's been with the city, you know, to get Le Mans Road for over a year. So if you have Spencer on and he wears a shirt again, so I'll turn it over to Spencer for presentation.
Good evening, our mayor and council members. So each year, the state requires cities to submit an annual progress report to the City Council, the State Office of Planning and Research, and the Department of Housing and Community Development regarding the progress being made in meeting the general plan goals and policies. This includes goals and policies for nineteen ninety-six general plan, two thousand and twelve housing element, and the twenty fourteen health and wellness element. This report can be tied to grants and other incentives. Significant changes from last year's report are highlighted in this year's for easier viewing. Some highlights from twenty-two are as follows. The city issued building permits for sixty dwelling units, including thirty-one accessory dwelling units, ten single-family residences, and nineteen multi-family residences. Additionally, the city received sixty-eight residential development and building permit applications in twenty twenty-two, proposing a total of twenty-eight single-family homes, forty ADUs, and six extended parcel maps. To encourage further housing development, consistent with state laws, the City Council adopted two ordinances regulating the development of ADUs and density bonuses in May of twenty twenty-two. Next, additional comments and revisions to the twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-nine housing element were requested by the State Housing and Community Development Department on July nineteenth of twenty twenty-two. Many staff and consultants have been working on revisions to satisfy state HCD pending certification from HCD. And lastly, staff continues to conduct with coordination meetings with the Sharon's Department to discuss high-prim areas and coordinate code enforcement issues. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt the resolution approving the general plan annual progress report and this includes staff's report.
I thank you so very much. And so I will check with our... Our city clerk to see if we have any superfluous regarding the specific areas in the item.
We have no superfluous.
Thank you very much. As we do not have any superfluous, I will look to our council members to ask questions of staff. You will have the questions, that's max. And I will start with Councilmember Mendoza. I actually have a whole page of questions, but you addressed one of them and Lydia addressed most of the other ones. So let me look through here and see which ones I actually did want to go over. One, one thing. This is not a highlighted item. It's item thirty-nine. And I don't really have a question. My question was answered about this. But this is what we, I just want to bring this to the attention mainly of my other council members. This is with regard to the Residential Traffic Management Program and that program is on hold. And I'd just like to suggest that when we get to goal setting, that this might be something that we want to think about bringing, bringing back. And then another discussion is number thirty-nine. No, that was fifty-two. It's like I can't talk and see this at the same time unless I work. Oh, this is, this is about parking supply. And again, I discussed this at length with our city manager. But this is also something that I think we as council members need to start looking at in the future. And that's parking within the city, citywide. Because a lot of parking restrictions that were in place or parking requirements that were have been in place are disappearing. And we really need to take a hard look at how this is affecting our neighborhoods and our businesses downtown. So again, this isn't a comment on the plan because this isn't even something that was highlighted. This is something that's just been carried over. But these are just two things that kind of that struck me as I was going through this and I think we need to keep an eye on these. So, thank you. Thank you so very much. Councilmember Laverne? Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question? I just see something has popped out. It was on page six. On page six of the General Plan Annual Progress Report. Under the Health and Wellness section. So it says, "Health and Wellness, the Health and Wellness Element identifies goals implementing the city's vision for good health in the community. In twenty twenty-two, building permits were issued to the city's third medical marijuana dispensary on Harris Street." I was just wondering, when did they initially apply for that, for their permit, the one on Harris Street? What year? Sorry if you don't have that off the top of your head, but there's other staffers here who I'm sure, no?
Don't know off the top of my head, but...
Lydia? Thank you, Bill. Deprived of the city manager, she's been here like six years or so, she knows. Of twenty-one, they first applied? Is that, does that seem about right, Lydia? Thank you, Ms. Deborah.
So did you say they were issued the PCU in twenty-one? Unfortunately, I don't carry all the massive figures in my head. If that question came up earlier, I would have been able to research it and give you the correct answer. But Mr. Choppin may know.
I did do a little background looking at Harris Street Dispensary. CUP, December twenty eighth. Land Steve irrigation plan submitted February twenty-one. Building permit application submitted March twenty-one.
Thank you, Bill. Then I have another, and... It's on the, it's on, it's two pages down from page six. It's titled, it's a graph, and it's titled Twenty Twenty-Two General Plan Annual Progress. Appendix, item one. Something that just popped out to me. It says, so it says beautify trolley corridor. And then it says task, beautify the trolley corridor to increase visual qualities and encourage trolley ridership. And then it says funding, general fund. Also, MTS, annual maintenance funds. So my question is, would you be able to tell me about how much per year is allocated towards that? And I ask these questions, of course, that's why we have staff here so that between multiple staff I would be able to at least at a minimum give ballpark numbers.
I believe we use most of our TDA funds, which is about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for the interior landscaping of the corridor, keeping the corridor clean. This particular goal is not one that was updated through this year. So this is an old, an old goal that came from previous years.
So you said from MTS, it's a hundred and twenty-two thousand a year. And then it also, it also says that we get money from the general fund for that, to meet that goal of beautifying the trolley corridor. How much do we use from the general fund? We haven't, we haven't allocated the general fund money in a very long time since I've been here. Because we have not had the general fund money allocated. Okay, got it. It listed as a funding source, but what you're saying is we don't actually use funds from the general fund. Because it says that we get, we meet that goal to beautify the trolley corridor by funding it through the general fund and then MTS.
You are correct.
Thank you so very much. We do have a second round of questions, but also have a committee to provide comments. Before we get to that, I will check in for the council members now.
Oh, one of the things that I, that popped my mind when I was going through this is the number of ADU or accessory dwelling units. Oh, one of the things that I, that popped my head when I was going through this is the number of ADU, or accessory dwelling unit, applications that have been taken out in twenty-twenty-two, and have been built. That's one of the things that living growth is unique. We have large properties here where ADUs have the possibility of fitting. But like Jennifer, there's, I would also like to highlight this as one of the things that we look at as alternatives to creating more affordable housing in our communities, and also alternative sources for people who are, who are senior citizens and giving them an ability to age in place by being able to make money on their property through rent through these accessory dwelling units. So that's something that I would like to encourage and see is more opportunities to facilitate the ease of getting permits and streamline the process that way.
And Mayor Pop Tim Gassel?
I don't have any questions right now.
I think you, we will now go to our second round of questions. But also, with the second round, our event leader, Tavi, opportunity to provide comments as well. And so I'll check in with council member Mendoza. This is, sorry, this is a long report here. Okay, again, I'm sorry, this isn't something that was highlighted, but one thirty-eight is our historic preservation ordinance. And the city has not initiated a historic preservation ordinance. And I think that we should. We have quite, and this sounds a little bit self-serving because council member Snow and I both have historic homes. But it doesn't necess, I mean, I don't even know that my home wasn't qualified. I think maybe it's had too many alterations to it. But we have a lot of beautiful historic homes, and not just homes, but also business properties in Long Grove. And I would like to see us seriously consider historic preservation ordinance in the near future. And then the last thing that I wanted to address. On the very last page of the report, and, back up for one second. It's the... I'm sorry, this is the tough thing about not having a paper. All the way to the end of this. I think it's on this last page where the number of, yeah, it's the summary page. So the sixty, the sixty units of single-family dwellings and ADUs were all put into the above moderate category. And I'm wondering if you could just give just a little brief explanation of why that is. Because I, I got, I found out the answer, but I think it's a good, it's, it's good to show that with all of us and with the public as well.
Sure. So HCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development, requires you, you know, they ask to identify the income for all these residential units. And when doing so, if you're suggesting that it is low income, you have to provide proof in the form of construction costs or rents that are going to be issued for those units. So we cannot prove that, so hence they are a moderate.
Thank you. Thank you for your questions. Councilmember Mendoza, I just want to add, that goes for every single one of the categories that are listed, which is very low, low and moderate. And in the report, you will see it says deed restricted and non-deed restricted. Deed restricted means that there is a covenant on the deed for that particular unit, and it can only be rented or sold to the people in that income bracket. Non-deed restriction, again, essentially means that they're going to keep it low income, but it's not going to be restricted to say they sell it or re-rent it if it go to a higher income. Because we don't have that documentation, especially with the ADUs, we're forced by HCD to put it into the above moderate category.
And the only positive thing about that is we are, our RENA allocation, our regional housing needs of allocation for above moderate is seven hundred and five. So it helps us meet that target, although we definitely want to try to meet the low and moderate targets also. All right, thank you so much. Thank you, council member Laverne. Hello? Thank you, Madam Mayor. My next question has to do with... I think you go to page five. General Plan Progress Report. So I know that we're looking at this, obviously, so we can look at progress on how well we're keeping to our housing goals, our conservation and recreation goals, safety goals. And so I'm doing so. I think that my next question speaks to conservation and recreation. And it's in, I believe in either... It's in either twenty-twenty, either in twenty-twenty-one or twenty-twenty-two. City council unanimously voted to grant, well, to release funds. Later it was from the general funds. And the, it was like in the dozens of thousands of tax dollars. I can't remember if it was like fifty thousand, sixty thousand, or something to that effect, to pay for new playground equipment at Berry Street Park. So, but, but at the same time, I don't really recall having seen any new playground equipment purchased and/or installed. Am I correct or mistaken that neither has been done?
You are correct. Councilmember Laverne, council has allocated those funds, but staff has not done that. Two reasons why. One, we had a dearth of employees, which means they couldn't follow up on that. We had at least four public works employees and three that had the responsibility to follow up on the monies and to purchase the playground equipment that left the city. So we're now back to the position where the public works director is actually working on that. So there should be something to council fairly shortly. And I don't believe it was general funds, it was grant funds that the council had approved.
Okay, so now, in that same vein, then, how much money was it? Refresh my memory, please.
If I recall correctly, it was approximately one hundred and ninety-seven thousand.
Okay, so about one hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars we voted. It was unanimous, I remember that. Is that why it was semi-correct in that it was just playgrounds for Berry Street Park? Or was that Berry and Mount Vernon? I mean, Washington? Was that twenty-twenty-one or twenty-twenty-two?
It had to have been twenty-one, because that's where we had a lot of mass activism. This is twenty-one and twenty-two.
Okay, thank you. So in twenty-twenty-one, we voted for one hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars to redo the park. Of course, that'd be great if we were to able to, well, thank you for all the hard work and thank you for, and do that now. Always nice to see that we're being, our public will be voting funds to buy some data. Get to see that we actually go through with buying stuff and then letting it up. Thank you so much. Next, we have council members now. No further comment? Thank you, Mayor Pop Tim Gassel.
You know, I want to echo what council member Mendoza said about historic preservation ordinance. I think that might be an appropriate thing for us to work on maybe for, for example, goal setting. I think that this, our city is very ambitious, and I think that we've, I think the report shows a lot of progress. I think that this city has a tendency to bite off more than we can chew, which is not necessarily a bad thing, we just keep chewing. And I think that, I think there's a lot of, there's a lot here. And I'm actually impressed that we got this much time when we were missing some of our people. And so I, I'm more than willing to accept, accept the report. And I want to say that at goal setting, we'll have a chance to look again at the big picture of what we're doing in our city and how we want to continue progressing. And I know that, that public works is going to be a big part of that. I can already predict that with some certainty. And so that will be May third, that we'll be discussing our goal setting for the coming year. And with that comment, I want to say I'm happy to accept the report. And I wasn't sure if it requires a motion to accept, I'd like to accept the report.
Thank you so very much. And while we are in the public hearing portion of this agenda item, it is noted that you're ready to move on forward with an acceptance. And I will say this before we close the public hearing. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank staff for preparing this annual report to make sure that we are well informed and engaged regarding where we are going with the city of living growth. I think that's very important. But also allowing us the opportunity prior to this meeting to ask questions so that we can get a better understanding of who would win why and where. I think that's important, that elected officials ask the questions. You know, knowledge is everything, but also doing your part to make sure that you are well informed is important. And so I just wanted to say thank you before we move on with closing the public hearing. Now, do we have a motion to public, to close the public hearing?
I'd like to move to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'll ask our super to call the roll.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Aye.
Councilmember Laverne?
Councilmember Laverne, aye.
Councilmember Snow?
Aye.
Mayor Pop Tim Gassel?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Motion heard.
Thank you. And now, do we have a motion to approve this item?
Yeah, I'd like to move that we approve the item.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'll ask our super to call the roll.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Aye.
Councilmember Laverne?
Councilmember Laverne, aye.
Councilmember Snow?
Aye.
Mayor Pop Tim Gassel?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
And motion heard unanimously?
Thank you. Item number three is a conditional use of that CUP two zero zero dash zero 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 one, trying to think of it. Medical marijuana dispensary, and then C at twenty-eight eighty Broadway in the heavy commercial zone. And I'll check in with our city clerk to see if all of the notices required by law have been given, and if the complete file of exhibits, correspondence and other documents have been provided. All the legal requirements have been met. Thank you. I'll turn it over to our city attorneys that asked council if they have been in disclosures, conflicts and history, they include this particular agenda item.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to go through and ask one of the council members to formally state whether they've had any export to communications regarding this matter and disclose those communications, and whether they have any conflicts of interest regarding this item with these.
Thank you. And so I'll start with council member Mendoza.
I just wanted to disclose that I received an email this, it was like at six o'clock this morning. And I, the email, I think was actually, it was from Mr. Williams, and it was actually addressed to council member Laverne. And it was regarding this matter. Thank you. Oh, and it also included her email to him. So there was an email from council member Laverne asking questions of Mr. Williams, and then, which I didn't get it. She didn't copy me on that email. But then when Mr. Williams responded to her email, he copied me on the email. But it also included her original email too. So I just wanted to disclose that. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Laverne.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
There was two questions that you asked correct. One was disclose any export to communications that you've had regarding the matter and whether you have any conflicts of interest.
Okay, so we were all CC'd in an email that Christopher, the applicant, Christopher Williams sent to all of us. We're all included on it. And then the second one, I have nothing. There's no comment.
Thank you. Council members now.
I was on the same emails I was on the first one, that was to all of council. And then I was on these, I was blind copied, I believe, on the second one that Jennifer Mendoza just described. And I have no comments.
Thank you. Mayor Pop Tim Gassel?
I noticed one CC, I think it's one of the messages that other council members have threw to. I didn't read it, and I have no comment.
Thank you so very much. I have two things here. One, I received an email from Chris Williams and Lyanna Laverne about the agenda item. And I actually printed it out, and I have copies here to share with everyone. So if I could have that pass these out to everyone here at the platform. And also, I believe there's an extra one to provide on the desk by the door for the public to view. The other thing is that I was contacted by someone who is known in the business community on behalf of Chris Williams and his investors. And there was a conversation specifically to discuss, the individual wanted to discuss how this project could get over the line and what they needed to do to make it happen. So far enough to put an invitation out there to fly to Vegas to meet, to see what we could do to get this project over the line. And I mean that we said no. And then I mentioned that I have a moral compass, and I have a value system. And that I'm not doing this for them. And even with that said, and declining, I was still contacted on Sunday wanting to chat about this agenda item. But also, I want to say this too. During the whole conversation, I pointed the individual to staff regarding their questions about the project. And I continued to point the individual to staff. And I encouraged the individual to follow up with staff on Monday regarding their questions and to take a look at the agenda item, because there could be answers in the agenda item. And on Sunday, when I received the message... And on Sunday, when I received the message, I again declined and mentioned that I was with my family. And I appointed them to staff and provided the phone number to call and follow up on Monday. So I wanted to disclose that on the mic during this company meeting so I want to make sure everything is clear and transparent. And so those are the two disclosures that I have. And I'll turn this over to our deputy attorney.
Thank you. I want to take a.
I just wanted to say. I forgot to say that I don't have any comments.
I'm sorry.
Yes, that's okay. I was saying.
Uh, I do not have any conflicts of interest, however, with the information that I shared. And I'll leave it up to your deputy attorney to provide any direction.
Thank you. First of all, I wanted to thank all of you for disclosing those communications. I have, I have been provided with a copy of the email that was sent that you all apparently have received, but not everybody is included on the, on the disposable copy lines and the direct to line. Only, the only people who received this email directly and who, I assume, I presume the remainder of you were blind carbon copied on this communication. It's directly to Councilmember LaBaron, copied is City Manager Romero, Mr. Tropic, Mr. Fellows and Mayor Vasquez. And so I assume that the remainder of you were blind copied, but I can't be sure of that because I haven't seen that from you. I would encourage all of you in the future to receive these communications via email to forward them to me or to the city manager so that we can be sure that the public is aware of any communications that you've sent to all five of you. So if you're getting blind carbon copied on things, you may as well assume that everybody else is blind carbon copied as well. And it's also a good teaching moment to remind you not to reply all, even if you think you're the only two people who have been included on the email. So thank you very much for disclosing and receiving these. There's a copy for the public to review on the table. And in terms of, it looks like there was an alleged bribe to the mayor. I would encourage any of you who receive a bribe, that's not uncommon, to disclose it immediately and report it to me so that we can take appropriate legal measures to pursue the person who was making the bribes. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, for disclosing that. That takes a lot of bravery and it does take a lot of ethics to do what you did. So I would encourage all of you to report those things to the public. I don't think that you have any conflicts of interest based on what you disclosed. If anything changes, please let us know. Otherwise, we can proceed with the item. Thank you.
I've seen that Councilmember LaBaron would like to make comments.
Thank you. I think that this has taken quite a bit of time, but just very quick, I'm going to read you the email response. So the applicant, Christopher Williams, there's a copy, but for anybody who doesn't want to read through the copy, I'll just read it. It's a two liner. Chris, applicant Christopher Williams sent an email saying that he cited some municipal code, saying that he should be granted an extension, or the municipal code. He points out the municipal code and that's what the municipal code says. And my response is two lines. In case anyone's wondering, seems like we've made a big point to point out that I did a response and I didn't reply all because I wouldn't want to put us in jeopardy of being in a Brown Act violation. So I have responded to the mayor and then the appropriate staff members were included on this. But I'm getting a sense that we're trying to make this seem like it's something nefarious, like this is something that it's not. So I'm going to read the sentences out loud, okay?
You know what? I can, I can stop you there.
No, I just read them out loud. So thank you for your email, Mr. Williams. No, ma'am. What did you ask? When did you ask for your initial extension? And further, did you submit a written request asking for an extension? Those are two questions that I asked. In case anybody was thinking I was up to anything nefarious that my colleagues kind of seem to be suggesting. It's two lines. And I said, "Thank you for your email, Mr. Williams." When did you ask for your initial extension? Right now because Councilmember LaBaron is out of order. Asking for an extension. Councilmember LaBaron, you're currently out of order. And we will continue to move on with this particular agenda item. As we continue on with this agenda item here, I will now open this up to Phil Tropic as we are entering into the public hearing. He is our interim community director, interim community development manager. Present the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers. A year ago, here we are again. I'd like to first point out in this scripter's error, mistake on the staff report under summary saying that on April 19th, 2023, the council adopted the resolution approving the CUP to read April 19th, 2022. So that's what was pointed out. I give you a lot of background here. So it was April 19th, 2022 that the city council adopted Resolution 2022-375, approving conditional use permit 200-0001. In that conditional use permit, there are 118 individual conditions on this conditional use permit. You're being a highly regulated campus dispensary. Many of them are standard conditions. Many are specific to this project. As of the writing of the staff report, only one condition has been satisfied so far. And that is the filing of the notice of exemption for the categorical exemption as an existing facility. And that was filed within five days of the council's decision. There's been, in the first hearing, there was a lot of discussion of traffic. Council went with the existing facility categorical exemption, which did not require a traffic study. So we were able to pass that, meaning this conditional use permit was approved. Like all other marijuana dispensary conditional use permits, there's this language that the CUP expires within one year or such longer period is made be approved by the city council of the City of Living Grove prior to said expiration date. Unless all requirements of the CUP have been met prior to said expiration date. So this is standard condition on dispensary CUPs does not allow the staff or the community development manager, the directors to extend the CUP because it clearly states in the resolution that it's up to council to grant an extension. March 22nd, Pickaxe Holdings, the applicant submitted a time extension application requesting a one-year time extension, CUP 200-001. So this particular CUP really dates back to November of 2020 when the applicant first filed a minor use permit application for early separation of findings. Shortly thereafter, November 28th, the applicant submitted a CUP application for a dispenser. On January 12th, the notice of decision by the community development manager was published to approve the minor use permit. No appeals were filed at that time. Then in December 2021, another CUP application was submitted for the property next door at 8290 Broadway by the property owners Rita Hermes and Sabah. January 12th, the CUP application was incomplete at that time and was not approved prior to the one-year expiration of the minor use permit. So the applicant reapplied for the minor use permit. And then the notice of decision was published. January 2002, the neighbors filed an appeal of that second decision. That appeal went to the council on April 5th last year, 2022. The council denied the appeal and approved the minor use permit for the applicant. The very next meeting on April 19th last year, the council approved the CUP. May 10th, staff determined the CUP for the neighboring property at 8290 Broadway to be a complete conditional use permit application. And the applicant did waive the hearing, waived the time limitation to hold the public hearing. Okay, so the CUP, I'm going to go over the big permit requirements. A CUP for a dispensary, one, you file a sequel notice of exemption. That's been done. Two, building permit application needs to be submitted. We just received a building permit application submitted today by the applicant. Three, landscape and irrigation plan. That was just submitted by the applicant today. Actually, he tried, applicant tried to submit yesterday, but didn't have the plans. We met him today and submitted the applications with the plans, which makes it a complete application. A demolition permit is required if there's significant demolition. There's also a requirement for construction and demolition debris diversion deposit so that we recycle the building materials. It's encouraging sustainability and recycling and that deposit is returned once you show that you recycle the building materials. Uh, grading and erosion control plan is in the permit, a public improvement plan, an encroachment permit. Undergrounding of utilities is required on this site. Likely would be done with an end-to-end agreement and a traffic control plan. So those are all of the things that are involved in actually exercising the conditional use permit and getting the project built. So in comparison, Boulevard, CUP 170, she's 001, was approved, CUP approved in June of 2018. Three months later, in September, the landscape and irrigation plan was submitted as well as building permit application was submitted. Demolition permit was issued with the deferred construction diversion deposit in November 18. May 28th, 2019, the building permit was issued, the landscape plan was approved. However, applicant couldn't complete instruction to satisfy all resolution conditions. So the council on June 18th of 2019 approved a one-year time extension after this significant substantial progress had been made. December of 2019, they installed group mounted solar photovoltaic system. And in October, a signage permit was issued for Boulevard. Walgreens is the other CUP that was extended by council. Is based back to September 2018. Council approved the CUP. Two months later, the applicant applied for building permit as well as the next day, construction and demolition debris diversion deposit paid for their demolition. Landscape and irrigation plan was submitted in May of 2019. And council approved a one-year extension in October of 2019. That occurred after the expiration, but the applicant had applied for that extension prior to, prior to the CUP. So then in May 2020, the building permit was issued. November 2020, an encroachment permit was issued. In March 2021, the signage permit issued and in June 2021, an alarm permit was issued. Recommendation of staff in the staff report is to deny the request of time extension because we look at everything that's involved in a conditional use permit. And up until today, really, no, no building permit application, no demolition, no landscape plan. All of those things that were listed have not been received by the applicant. And again, this morning, we did just receive the building permit application and the landscape plan. So this is staff recommendation. If there are any questions, happy to answer.
Uh, thank you so very much. Before we get to questions, I will ask a representative for Pickaxe Holding, and I believe it is Chris Williams who will present today. And this applicant will have 15 minutes to make a presentation.
Chris, do you want to use the recorder to go through your slides?
If you don't mind, I just want to misstrike clarify the process. Particularly there is a rebuttal situation where I've been reported back. So I don't, I don't think I need it yet, Mr. Trump.
Uh, first, I would like to start off by thanking city council for tonight, as well as city staff. I spent the last two days in city hall and I would like to give Ms. Spencer Richards a big thank you. Dominic, a big thank you. Mr. Tropic respectfully disagree with the denial by city staff, but I still do appreciate your time and professionalism. I think the biggest elephant in the room, first off, I would like to address what seems like proprieties owned in my direction, the word alleged bribe thrown in my direction. I take high offense to that. Also notice that the mayor did not say any names of any individuals. And I encourage the mayor to clear the record right now, tonight, with names because I absolutely have nothing to do with any conversations, any invitations, any deals. Because I don't believe I need any. I've never asked for none and I will never ask for none. So again, if something was said that you believe was wrong, people who are within your circle, please say their names. Please let's clear this record. I think the public and myself deserve that based off the accusations that were made and the clear language by the city attorney that there was an alleged bribe. That's, that's really sad. But again, if someone did call or did have a conversation, that was on my behalf. I am open to doing whatever we can to make sure whoever is doing those things are held responsible. But I would love to hear who called you, when they called you, why they called you, what was said on the record. Thank you very much. Also in regards to the emails. These emails were sent to every city council member in effort to make sure that every city council member had the information in regards to what was going to be presented tonight. There was nothing nefarious about it. A matter of fact, since it seems like it may have been based on what was said up there, I want to make sure that I read the emails clearly for the public. I sent, first off, just to clarify dates and time for Mr. Tropic, my written request for an extension was actually March 20th, which was sent to Michael Fellows, where I received an out-of-office reply which stated I must speak with Mr. Tropic. I immediately sent an email to Mr. Tropic. He responded with an out-of-office reply that said he no longer works for the City of Living Grove and to reach out to Michael Fellows. That's what the emails state. So since I have nobody in the planning department or in the development service department, excuse me, to be able to help me, I sent an email to the next best person and I included everybody on council. I sent the message to Ms. Romero on March 30th. Ms. Romero, good morning. Over all is with you. I understand that Mr. Fellows is out on paternity leave. Congratulations to him and his family on a new bundle of joy. The interim director, Mr. Tropic and I were going back and forth regarding the public hearing, municipal calls and significant progress we have made with the CUP. Unfortunately, during the conversation, I received. Unfortunately, during the conversation, I received an out-of-office reply from Mr. Chupick. I have concerns that the vital information for the hearing will not be considered in his absence due to time constraints. The email from Mr. Chupick states he will not return to the office until April third, twenty twenty-three. This is only one day before the public hearing. With Mr. Chupick out and the hearing so close, I figured you would be the next best person to contact. So with that said, please find our progress at below. It is a Dropbox link that will show significant activity has been made. I'd like to make sure this information is shared with the public at the hearing. In addition, I was attempting to seek clarification of the municipal code seventeen dot twenty-eight dot zero two zero. Application procedures published on the city's website clearly state that as the permit is issued, I may file a written request anytime prior to the expiration of the permit. Development Service Director may grant the initial extension. Can you please clarify why, based on the municipal code, a public hearing and filing fee were necessary for my initial extension request for the CUP? I included the municipal code, time extensions, at any time prior to the expiration of approvals or permits subject to this title. The permitee for such approval or permit may file a written request for extension of time. The Development Service Director may grant an initial extension of the term of the permit. I also included in the email, here is the link to the municipal code for reference. Please let me know that this email was received and you were able to access the Dropbox link showing significant activity has been made. I understand that Mr. Chupick is out, so can you also confirm the information and documentation within the Dropbox link will be included in the staff report for the hearing? If you have any questions or concerns, please do not hesitate to contact me. Make it a great day, Ms. Romero. Respectfully, Chris Williams. That was the email that was sent to everybody. It's really a shame that that email was made out to seem like it was something nefarious. The only council member who I do appreciate for at least reading the email was Ms. LeBaron. She responded. You bear with me until the thread. The Anna LeBaron responded. Thank you for the email, Mr. Williams. When did you ask for your initial extension? And further, did you submit a written request asking for an extension? I responded to the email. And since it was Ms. LeBaron who asked the question, I BCC every council member, so that way we all have the same information, which has been clearly stated in multiple public hearings that every council member should have access to all the information, which is why you are BCC. Nothing nefarious about it. I'm trying to do my best job as the applicant to make sure you understand why I'm asking for a time extension. Ms. LeBaron, thank you for your email. My initial and only request for an extension was made in writing to Development Service Director, Mr. Fellows, on March twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Well before the expiration permit, excuse me, well before the expiration of my permit on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Again, I'd like to clarify, my permit has not even expired yet. I asked a month prior to my expiration. In addition, I requested a public hearing date for April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. And I was told by staff via email that the agenda was already full. The denial to have my extension on April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three agenda put me at a significant disadvantage in comparison to the other MMDs that receive staff's recommendations or approval for an extension. In contrast, conditional use permit, CUP one-eighty zero 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 two for six-eight-five-nine Federal Boulevard, made an initial extension request in writing on September first, two thousand and nineteen. This was only three days prior to their CUP expiration date on September fourth, twenty nineteen. The meeting date to hear the conditional use permit appears to have been on October, October first, twenty nineteen, which would have been after the permit expired. With that said, staff recommended a time extension approval for one year to allow the applicant to obtain a building permit, satisfy the remaining conditions of approval, and commence operations. CUP one-seven-zero zero 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 one for the six-four-seven Federal Boulevard permit expired June nineteenth, twenty nineteen, and had a meeting date for the extension request on June eighteenth, twenty nineteen, one day prior to its expiration. Staff recommended approval for the extension request to allow the applicant to complete the permanent tenant improvements, satisfy remaining conditions, and commence operations. Please find staff reports recommended approval for time extensions for CUP one-seven-zero zero zero one and CUP one-eight-zero one zero zero two attached to this email. I am respectfully asking the city council to allow me to obtain a building, uh, permit, an extension to obtain a building permit, complete the permanent tenant improvements, satisfy remaining conditions of approval, and commence operations. Additionally, the owner of six-eight-five-nine Federal Boulevard was later indicted in the following months after their extension was granted, and received favor from city staff and council to change ownership or commencing operations. I have made a public record request for more information on the matter, but I have yet to receive a complete response to records from staff. And I included the leak from the DOJ regarding the indictment. Sincerely, Chris Williams. Those are the emails. Those are not nefarious. I'm doing my job as an applicant to communicate. And it's a shame that the council members who I look to and order for my projects to move forward would make these emails seem like it was nefarious or some trick. That is not fair, and it's hurtful, and it's damaging. And I know nobody up there would wanna be in my shoes to have someone act like an email that what I just read directly was something nefarious. Please, let's try to do better to work together. The, this, to try to make me seem like a bad guy, asking for exactly what the other applicants have received for their MMD, one of them who was indicted in the process, is really, really unfair, and it's absolutely telling on why my project's goalpost always seems to move when I get to the finish line. Now again, I want to thank staff. I know you guys' job is not easy. But I am up here trying to do for my family what you guys are all up there trying to do for yours. I'm trying to do for my community, like I hope all of you guys are trying to do for the community who voted for you. So I ask that you guys look at this with a fair mindset. The same mindset that was shared with the individuals who received approvals from staff in much, much, much more challenging situations than I have. There were semantics used in your report that I do not agree with. But I don't blame you, Mr. Chupick. I know that you are just doing your job and you got here late. What I do ask is for a fair opportunity to move this project forward. I have spent a lot of money moving this project forward. So to hear that I have not done anything is really, really hurtful. And as someone who does this on a day-to-day basis, and to see the thickness of the plans on what we did to hear that. Again, I'm here to work with staff, but I ask staff that they be fair in how they present to the public. Please. So I have two minutes left, and then I'll get everybody. So I'd like to clearly state on the record that this is an opportunity for us to work together, be better a part of this City of Living Grove, the east side of Living Grove, to be a renaissance. I'm bringing the value. I'm not just doing some little simple ti-ah. This is a major deal. And there has been nobody who has been able to complete that in one year. Mr. Chupick used my minor use permit. Minor use permit is not a CUP. That is misleading. I have had less than one year. I would like to state again for the record, you guys are trying to bury me before I even die. My application is still open right now, has not expired and will not expire until April nineteenth. And so for these semantics to be used to make it seem like I'm not trying to do my job, I'm not trying to work with the council, I'm not trying to get things done on, is an unfair representation. I'd like to be treated like everybody up there would like to be treated, and it's not a hard ask. I am asking for the same thing that other applicants receive. An opportunity to move this project forward. Don't put me on Mission Impossible spending tens and hundreds of thousands of dollars and use a landscape permit that cost a hundred and fifty dollars to try to deny my permit. I paid the landscapes. I did the building permit. You say as of today, I would like to remind everybody up there respectfully that as of today, my permit is still open. So why am I being punished for turning in what is necessary prior to my expiration date? Please, let's do what's best for the city, because we are willing to spend billions of dollars to clean up an area that has been ripe for years. Don't undercut me to try to have someone else scoop and score. I have done what I have been asked to do, and the only thing I'm asking to carry this project forward. In a few moments, I will bring up the architect in my rebuttal, and I will be short. Tried to be short today, my plan was to be short, but it started off with accusations that is not fair. And once again, respectfully, I ask the mayor, because I have nothing to hide, please, please, share whoever's caused you and share what they said.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
What I will do now is I will have two rounds of questions from the city council. And the first round, each council member will have two questions. And then the second round, the council member will be able to ask two questions and provide comments during this public hearing. And so I'll start with Councilmember Mendosa.
Um, okay, um, these are not necessarily questions, but I'll ask Mr. Chupick to confirm if I'm saying this correctly. So in this instance, with this permit, nothing, you have not, our, the city has not received anything in the last ten, eleven months until March twenty. Yet, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And we did receive, when we approved this, we did receive a built, a, a building plan that was very, it was very similar to the permit request that, that was received on March twenty. I'm not an expert at reading building plans, so I really couldn't tell what the differences were. But I noticed with the other two applications that with sixty-four-seventh Federal Boulevard, the building permit was submitted within three months of approval of the CUP. But it took eight months to get an approval. And I, I'm assuming that because there's a lot of back and forth with, with these building permits. You know, the, the permit is submitted, and then this city, it takes some time for it to be reviewed, and then it's sent back to the applicant, they make some changes, and then sent back to the city, and it's, it's a back and forth process. And then with the sixty-eight fifty-nine Federal Boulevard, that building permit was received within two months of the approval. And the application for a building permit was received within two months. And that was approved in a little bit shorter period of time, six months. But there's still a lot of back and forth. So I'm just pointing, I, I, I just wanted to point out that with these other two applications, the building permits were submitted within several months of being approved. Yet it appears in this case, we didn't get a building permit for eleven months. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Barrett.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did wanna say, I did not see anything, I, I was not inferring anything nefarious. But when we just, we have to, please understand, we have to disclose if we get communications from any of the, of the applicants. It's just something we have to say. So I personally did not feel that there was anything nefarious done by Mr. Williams or by Councilmember LeBaron.
Councilmember LeBaron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Today, we are talking about very, very serious business. We're talking about medical marijuana. And I too would like to know who made a bribe to an elected official in exchange for a vote and or unlawful favor to the mayor, as example. And I would like to request a formal investigation into this matter because what you, Mayor Rachel Vasquez, have just admitted to in the open during this recorded and public meeting in front of all these witnesses is an absolute crime. So that's my first ask. We cannot take those kinds of things lightly. If someone is bribing you, we need to know who. And again, I'm requesting that we launch a formal request into that matter. Actually, that's the first thing, and that's actually very, very important. I'd like you to note that, Ms. Stanky, as our city attorney.
Noted. Also, another question. Why if someone has until a certain time to prove themselves, why would staff be prematurely denying someone their lawful right and opportunity to get something done by getting ahead of ourselves as a city and wishing doom and denial on a business? And I say that because it's very clear that the applicant has time to complete their CUP. They, they haven't even expired yet, and we're already giving them to damnation. I mean, they still have time to prove themselves, and actually, like it's conceded here very quickly, they showed progress toward getting stuff done today. And actually, like the applicant makes clear, they requested this time extension, March twentieth. That was a while ago, and it was in writing, just like the Living Grove Municipal Code says, which the Living Grove Municipal Code is law. And it says that all you have to do as a perpentee is to file a written request anytime, anytime, I'm fisted on the word anytime, prior to the expiration of the permit. The applicant's permit doesn't expire until a couple of weeks from now. And further, it says that the Development Service Director, which would be Mr. Fellows in his absence, it would be Mr. Chupick, may grant the initial extension. So again, my question is, why if someone, like the applicant, Mr. Williams, why if someone has until a certain time to prove themselves, why would city staff be prematurely denying someone their lawful right and opportunity and getting ahead of ourselves and wishing doom and denial on a business? I'll turn this over to a city attorney.
I think that's a good opportunity for you to chime in about what the municipal code says. But I'd also, before I do that, I'd like to respond to the premature request for a denial of the time extension. And I wanna put that to the city council, which is, that's something you can consider. If he has until April nineteenth to complete this CUP, you can consider that in the resolution that we passed tonight. And so if you would like to see substantial progress between now and April nineteenth, and that's gonna be a determining factor for you, I suggest you discuss that amongst yourselves, and that you include that in a carefully crafted resolution, as I know you all will. And so that's the, that's the first part of my comment. The second part of my comment is to read the portion of the Municipal Code that I think Councilmember Laverne was referencing, which is seventeen point twenty-eight point oh-two-oh-J. Oh, I'm sorry, K, which is time extensions. And it says, "At any time prior to the expiration of approvals or permits subject to this title, the pernentee for such approval or permit may file a written request for an extension of time." That was done here. "The Development Services Director may grant an initial extension of the term of the permit." "May" is a discretionary word. You just can't say "shall." He has the discretion to deny or approve. In this case, there's an additional factor, which is the resolution that was passed, which is the CUP in this case. And in that CUP, under the permit issue, there is a sentence, there is a paragraph that appears at the end of the CUP that says, and I quote, "This conditional use permit expires April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three." And in parentheses, it says, "For such longer period as may be approved by the City Council of the City of Lemon Grove prior to said expiration date." End of parentheses. "Unless all requirements of this conditional use permit have been met prior to said expiration date." Staff, reading the Municipal Code and the conditional use permit in conjunction, made the decision to bring this matter to the city council for determination as it has in the past with other extension requests. I would also add that staff's recommendation is to deny the extension. If it had stayed within the discretion of staff, there would have been a denial of the extension. So he's bringing it to you all to make that determination, as has been done in the past by staff in this city. If you have any questions about the Municipal Code, I'm happy to answer those questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Now you just make it even more clear. These are business meetings. So my first question actually is, why on earth are we wasting the public's time being here doing this, discussing this right now? Applicant, I mean, honestly, that's what it seems like we're doing. And really, I want to question, what is this all about? This seems like this is political. This seems like most of you guys probably hate Mr. Williams. This is a waste of the public's time because at the same time that we could have done this at a latter time, we could be agendizing things that the public actually cares about, like fixing our roads, like supporting opportunities for recreation, like our pickleball, or reopening the rec center, or maybe reopening the senior center. Because those basic services are not provided in this city. Yet here we are, trying to make a statement, trying to really stick it to an applicant by prematurely coming after them, doing something that we haven't done for other MMD applicants. We haven't. The record shows that. Yet here we are, weeks before, trying to make it a point. Come on, guys, we could do better than this. We could be agendizing other serious matters. Our roads are incomplete, disrepair right now due to the rain, amongst other stuff that just made it worse. These are business meetings. We need to work smarter, not harder.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilmembers Snow.
If I may, can I address a question to Mr. Williams? Mr. Williams, would you mind coming up?
Yes.
So as we sit here, it's not just a business meeting in the business of the city, but it's also a quasi judicial forum, which is why, the reason why we have to disclose those is because I'm aware, if I go around talking directly to the judge without the other side there, the other side gets really upset. Even if it's innocent communications, you can't do ex parte communications, and that's the reason why we were disclosing those things. Do you understand that?
I do understand that.
Okay.
And I do want to thank Ms. Mendoza for stating what she said on the record. And it wasn't necessarily the email that concerned me. It was the word of alleged bribe, and that's what concerned me. So I do appreciate you, Councilmember Snow, clarifying why the emails might have were disclosed. It was just the way that it was disclosed, I guess. You know, made me feel like I had to spend my time, our presentation, on addressing that. But I do appreciate you clarifying my word.
So that leads me to my next part. And what I really hope to hear in your presentation was the reason why it took you until today, after having an entire year to get this paperwork in. Why did you wait until today to even try to get those papers turned in?
That's a great question, Ms. Snow. I appreciate the question. These CUP permits are highly, highly expensive. It takes a lot. And I'm taking a very old building that was previously a toll yard and trying to do something very special with it. And that takes a lot of communication, a lot of back and forth between engineers, architects, specialized knowledge, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. And I will have the experts speak on, a little bit more on your question, because they're the experts when it comes to the type of work that goes into doing these CUPs. I'd like to clarify also, Mrs. Councilmember Snow, that the Municipal Code states that I need to show substantial activity. It does not state that I need to file a building permit. Does not state I need to have a MO permit. Does not state I need any permit. It clearly states that I need to show significant activity. And one of the things that we are doing is trying to create something beautiful, but we're not just here to apply for permits. We're here on the first submittal to get it done right. Not just apply for building permits to act like we're doing something. We're trying to get it done right. And as Ms. Mendoza stated, they, the other applicants, which I want to state for the record, you know, it's not a race between the other applicants, what they've done and what they've done. The Municipal Code clearly states significant activity. But we want to get everything done the first time. So when we submit, staff can come back and say, this is a done deal. The building permits is a couple thousand bucks just turned in. It took me, you know, an hour to do. But what takes a very, very long time is to make sure that when we do submit the building permits, that we are, we have everything in order, all our ducks in order. So that way, it actually passes. Or at least, at the very least, we only have a few comments and a few changes that we need to make from staff. But it's not where we start, it's where we finish. And we were trying to be thorough in regards to what we were turning into the city, for my sake and for staff's sake and for council's sake.
Thank you so very much. And next, on the phone, we have Mayor Phil Kim Vasquez.
Okay, yeah, I I want to to reaffirm what Councilmember Mendoza said about the communication. I, the reason, the reason I didn't read it is because we normally read what's in staff reports and what's shared in public session. And probably there isn't any more I need to say that hasn't already been said. I, I don't see anything nefarious in the communication or in the application. And I think that it's certainly the reason, it's reasonable to ask for an extension if you think that more time will make a difference. That being said, I also think it is reasonable to not grant an extension if it appears that there is inadequate progress to justify an extension. So I'm, I, I'm keeping an open mind on this. I want to hear more. But I, I think we do well to focus on what progress we see and what more would need to be done and weigh the weigh the different variables, you know, with an eye to the substance. I, yeah, I don't, I don't see anything nefarious. And at the same time, I don't see anything unfair in staff saying that, that our extension isn't recommended. That's within their their, within their professional judgment to recommend or not recommend an extension. So I, yeah, I just, I think I want to hear a little more about how substantial a progress really is and how much more we expect, how much more we would need. And so that's, I pretty much just in a listening mode and, yeah, hopefully focus on the substance. Thanks.
Thank you for that, Dr. Mayor. Thank you so very much. And I do have one question of staff before we move forward. And if this particular business was open today, if you take a look at the annual amount of funding that could be generated from this type of business, how much funding could, and it could be a ballpark per year, could be added to our general fund?
Based on our last discussion we have with council for the mid-year budget report, with the tax that was passed in November of twenty, we're getting about five percent of gross proceeds, which means we are, each dispensary's roughly around, I'm trying to pull the number off of my head, roughly around a hundred and seventy-five thousand per year, a hundred and seventy-five to two hundred thousand per year with the, with the gross proceeds tax that the voters passed and the council set that five percent. And that is for a full retail use cannabis dispensary. And I believe that's what Mr. Williams was going to be making as well. Both recreational and medical.
I thank you for that clarification regarding the amount of funding that could be generated from this business being open and active in our business community. So right now, if we look at the grand scheme of things, we could have an additional hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per year in our general fund to not only maintain but improve our quality of life. Is that correct? Thank you so very much. What I will do now is I'll, I'm going to go ahead and move on to our public comment portion of this agenda item. And I do have some speakers over here. And I will start with Julian Yamakis, followed by Kathleen McLean. And we will have three minutes.
Hello, everybody. So I would personally love another dispensary in Lemon Grove because of the tax dollars it may bring and because the area is located in, could use a facelift, let's be honest. So I support the extension. And as Bill, oh, sorry. As Bill stated, these businesses are very expensive to open. So it makes sense to me that you may be having trouble meeting their requirements as quickly as the city has defined. And then finally, from my experience of the applicant, they spend a lot of their personal time volunteering for our city. And so I have a belief that it makes sense to allow our own homegrown resident another attempt to open their business. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kathleen McLean, followed by Teresa Rosi at Prophet.
Hi, my name is Kathleen, and I support this project. I'm asking you to please give us the same consideration that you have given the other MMDs. This project has completed ninety-five percent of the CUP conditions. It was turned in last week in a Dropbox link that was sent to city staff. All they had to do was open it and download it. It was like sixty-eight pages of nothing but plans. Those are confusing to me, but I trust our architect that they are all there and correct. This activity was substantial enough for all the other CUP applicants to receive a one-year extension. I'm asking the project to please be given the same consideration. The CUP doesn't expire until four nineteen, which means we have turned in substantial amount of documents and work on the project before our expiration date. The word substantial is ambiguous, and it leaves complete discretion up to the people voting on the project. I would need to ask why ninety-five percent of conditions being met, a landscape plan being completed and turned in last week, and paid for, and a building permit being submitted and paid for, isn't substantial? However, when the other three CUPs, two MMDs, what, three MMDs and a VED, came and asked for more time to complete a project that was supported by city staff. In fact, the staff reported and said, and I quote, "They were given a one-year extension to allow permitted building tenant improvements, satisfy remaining conditions of approval, and commence operations." We are asking for the exact same thing. A one-year extension to allow permitted building tenant improvements, hence the building permit, and to satisfy the remaining five percent of conditions to commence operations. We aren't asking for anything that the others have. I am confused about an expiration date. When we receive an expiration date, we expect it to turn in everything and before the expiration date. That's what the expiration date is for. I didn't realize that we were going to be judged and scored on the time that we entered things before the expiration date. I didn't know that there was going to be like, say like, a small goal, and then another small goal, and then another small goal. And we would be judged against the other applicants for how quickly they turned in that goal compared to us. When it has been turned in before the expiration date of the nineteenth. Had that been listed of, hey, you have to turn in the building permit, we would have no problem turning in the building permit. Those are papers, and it's money, and then you just turn them in. We were working very hard to make sure that our plans were correct and great. And we hired an amazing, amazing architect, this award-winning architect, to make sure that that building was beautiful. We were moving a roof from a toll yard, like a really old toll yard. The whole area is, definitely was in worse condition than the other projects. We want to make sure it's done correctly. We want to make sure it's done beautiful.
Thank you for your time. Thank you very much. Next, we have Teresa Rosi at Prophet, followed by Brittany Fazer. I know I said it wrong. They can correct me when you come up. And I apologize in advance for saying her last name from Teresa Rosi at Prophet.
Good evening. I support this project. It's time to work together and come together and leave all personal feelings at the door. And that is not done with some of you. I urge you to give this project the extension as you have given all the other CUP applicants. And a prime example is the veterinary clinic. They have been given many extensions. Not just one extension, many. And the veterinary clinic still is not opened. Chris Williams and his family support and enriches our community. And we need this business in Lemon Grove to further support our community and its endeavors. Please stop stonewalling the opening of this business and approve the extension that you have granted to many others in the past. Chris Williams is not asking for special treatment. Just an opportunity to open this business. Several of you sitting up there tonight claim to be business-friendly. Yet many businesses go through hell, and yes, I said hell, to open in Lemon Grove. And this must cease. The facts and the data show we need this business financially. And this business will beautify the blight of Lemon Grove. This is a no-brainer. But sometimes I question some of you, do you have a brain? Are you using it? Are you listening? I ask you to do the right thing tonight, and I've asked you before. Stop trying to ruin a good man and his commitment to Lemon Grove. And some of you up there do. And some of you up there do not have a moral compass or you don't have values because you lie to our faces and you lie on the stand at a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Brittany Fraserfield, followed by Cameron Rosmas, Camara Rosmas.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Brittany Fraserfield and I'm an attorney at Austin Legal Group here on behalf of our client, Rita Hermes Sabatoma, in opposition of PICAX's request to extend the expiration of its CUP. Tonight, the city council, in its sole discretion, can deny this extension request without regard to any specific findings pursuant to the express language and condition of approval of number eight. Condition number eight provides that the CUP expires on April 19th, 2023, or such longer period as may be approved by the city council, unless all of the requirements under the CUP have been met prior to said expiration date. Because the CUP requirements have not been met, the city council holds a discretion to deny this extension request for any reason. If the city council believes that approving an extension for this site would be detrimental to the city's economical growth, you can choose to deny this request on that basis alone. The applicant has been gaming the city's permitting process at this location for three and a half years and continues to do so as of this morning. To clarify from staff's presentation, in October 2019, the applicant submitted the first of its three minor use permit requests for an early separation findings at this location. Although not a CUP application, it does prevent other campus retail development operators to come in and get retail approval. It wasn't until over a year later, in November 2020, when the applicant finally submitted a CUP application. However, it was so insufficient, the city could not review it. The applicant didn't respond to the city until over 11 months later, in November 2021, six days short of the application expiration date. Despite missing several application materials, the CUP hearing was set for April 19th, 2022, at which the CUP was approved. As of yesterday, almost an entire year later, the applicant had failed to submit a compliant building permit application to the city. However, in typical fashion, we were informed that PICAX submitted a building permit application to the city this morning, just a few hours before this extension request. The applicant has had plenty of time to demonstrate his capability and good faith intentions to develop this property, but has failed to do so. The continuous behavior has deprived the city significant tax dollars and redevelopment opportunities in an area where revitalization is desired. In light of this, we ask the city council, follow staff's recommendation and deny the extension request for the benefit of the Lemon Grove economy and overall community. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Camara Rosmas, followed by Gina Austin.
Good evening, Mayor and municipal members of the city council. My name is Camara Rosmas. I am with Austin Legal Group. And I am speaking in opposition to the extension request on behalf of Rita Hermes and Sabatoma. I want to quickly remind the council members, as they probably know, that the CUP has 27 pages, most of which are conditions of approval in a 27-page document that will guide the council member's decision to see as to whether or not one year was reasonable for the applicant to wait to submit his plans. I would also say that just over one year ago, on March 21st, 2022, I was present here when the council deemed an incomplete application and issued a notice of complete to PICAX. So I've gone back before the CUP application. And part of that approval, first I will say, the city had not done this before. And I believe the city rationalized this deviation with the caveat that missing items, which included a parking study, a traffic study, and architectural plans, would be part of the comprehensive CUP application package should the city council approve the CUP application, which it did in April of 2022. From that day forward, PICAX had to comply not only with the notice of complete, but with the conditions of approval on the CUP application, and it had one year to do so. Fast forward to today, I'm nervous when I hear you, and my voice is shaking and I'm talking too fast. Today, on April 4th, 2023, PICAX wants an additional year to submit this information. Now, I'm not a planner either, but a cursory review of the plan submitted this morning would show that at a minimum, the plan submitted does not contain conditions of approval to F, G, H, J, K, 3A, D, I, K, L, M, and N. Further and significantly, it cannot meet condition number four, final inspection and certificate of occupancy, because it doesn't have an approved set of plans. Also significant, it cannot meet condition of approval number five because, which is the, um, I don't have it in my notes, because it doesn't have approved plans. So it goes back to those approved plans in that cycle review process between staff and the applicant. Quick summary, been three and a half years, we're here again, we're here a year before, talking about the same inability for this applicant to get his plans taken care of. Um, it takes a long time. That's why you have to start early. There's better, um, better uses, better revenues that could be coming to the city. We ask the council not to award PICAX for its multi-year complacency to support staff's recommendation to deny the extension request and not permit it to hold its place in line for another year.
Next, we have Gina Austin, followed by
Gary Jones.
Good evening, council members. My name is Gina Austin and my clients echo the objections of the previous two speakers. The municipal council sets the expiration of CUP at 12 months from the approval unless construction and/or use and reliance has commenced. There's no dispute that construction hasn't commenced. Yeah, in fact, no permits of any type have been issued. The question is whether there's been use and reliance, and the answer is undeniably no. Construction could shoot broadly and most favorably to the applicant. This would mean that the applicant has performed substantial work in good faith reliance upon the permit. While there's no bright line rule for what constitutes that, the email dump by Mr. Williams last week and the submission of in-submission plans this morning are clearly not that. And we heard about the plans submitted this morning. We are assuming, because we have not seen them, that they are substantially similar to the email dump that was sent last week. As you can see from exhibit D to my letter, that what was dumped last week is woefully insufficient. That is in a review from an architect showing all of the problems with what was sent in the email. Many local jurisdictions have grappled with whether an applicant has performed substantial work in good faith reliance. The county of San Diego, for example, and the city of San Diego routinely held that the mayor's mission of a building permit is insufficient to meet that requirement. The applicants who have been granted extensions submitted much more documentation than what you have seen today. This council can and should find that there is no construction or use and reliance of this permit and that it is in the best interest of the city to deny the time extension. However, if this council chooses to grant the extension, which we urge you not to do because it'll just continue to put you on this merry-go-round. But if you do, we, um, we, we request that it not be for another year. Do not delay this for another year. Rather, the council, if it should choose to move down this path, should grant an extension allowing no more than 30 days for the applicant to submit all the required permit application materials, including but not limited to everything that was listed on the screen by Mr. Chobek and the conditions of approval under item number two, letters F, G, A, J, and K, item number three, letters A, D, I, K, L, M, and N. In addition, if an extension should be granted on the, um, there needs to be conditions so that the applicant must respond to requests from the city within 30 days or the extension should be automatically terminated. We request that you do not extend this conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next, we have Brittany Fraserfield.
A little different on this side. So what could be said, but let me stick to the business of the community. One year ago, Mr. Williams was granted a condition use permit at this location. At that time, he met all of the requirements and the council had no choice but to approve the application, even knowing Mr. Williams' propensity for delay and inaction. It was still the right thing to do at the time. But it's a year later. There's been no sign of good faith or any tangible evidence that Mr. Williams has the ability or desire to complete this project. The council has seen this before from Mr. Williams. The last-minute delivery of documents on the need of an extension request is not good faith. It's not substantial and frankly, it's insulting. The appearance of it is, is he is simply trying to tie up the limited dispensary properties still available in Lemon Grove. This is nothing new, but as a matter of fact, this is the second opportunity that Mr. Williams has squandered. Mr. Williams was awarded a distance permit of appeal on April 15th, 2017, for his North Avenue property. His inability to work with staff led him to force an incomplete CUP application to be presented to the council four years later. In that case, council had no, no choice but to deny the application. Now, Mr. Williams will put the blame on staff or anyone else, for that matter, but himself. Many of you seem in correspondence over the four years and you know that the problem wasn't with staff. Yes, the CUP process is orderous, but necessary. When used, it is a necessary tool to protect the public's interest. Orderous, however, is not impossible. And three other dispensaries have made it through the application process and, and two of them are operating. And yes, they were distinct granted extensions, but there was substantial progress being made. There was communications with staff and, and then it was justified. Your own staff has told you this and they were quite clear. In closing, I'd like to remind you that this extension is completely at your discretion. You have no findings of fact, other than your conscience. What your conscience tells you is best for the greater community in Lemon Grove. In your fiduciary role, you owe it to your constituents and this jury and free up this area for someone, and you've heard that there are people ready to go, has the ability and genuine desire to deliver the project to this community so this community can reap the benefits from the campus tax we passed in 2020. Your community demands it and your public demands it.
Thank you so very much. And now I begin the applicant, five minutes to rebuttal. May I approach the podium?
Madam Mayor, uh, may I ask for an extra seven minutes for my architect to speak? Because I have to address, you know, what at times seemed like accusations of nefarious activity with emails and calls. So my architect, I've not had the opportunity to speak to the concerns of Councilmember Gasko, Allison Snow, in regards to what has been done, where we are at, and why we are here.
He has five minutes for the rebuttal. We want to stick to the agenda items. He may proceed.
All right, so, thank you, Madam Mayor. First off, I'd like to address, on the record, I don't have a lot of time, obviously, it feels intentional. It's hard to address your concern, Mr. Gasko, in five minutes, but I'll do my best. I'd like to bring up Marjorie to talk about where we are at with our project. I'd also like to put on the record that, uh, you know, it's taken this long because I was first denied 8285 staff for being too close to a school. I have to fight that to get to where this point is. This rug has been constantly trying to be pulled out from underneath so that my former attorney and her clients can take over this deal. Yes, Gina Austin, Austin Legal, was my attorney for the very same project that Mr. Gary Jones brought up, as well as for 8280. Please look into who she is representing, who she is being sued by, and who or why her clients constantly end up indicted. It's a serious business and these people need to be looked at and held accountable, and I'm sure it's true. Please, Marjorie, if you have time, I know it's really quickly and I apologize for reading you here for two minutes. But that's all for your live.
Chief, Mayor, council staff. Can I have a clicker to show the slides? Okay. Let's go to the fun stuff. This looks like nothing doing here. Okay, so, um, we have prepared six exhibits, games of drives, including landscaping, civil, soils, tuba map, tuba, architectural interiors, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and structural, environmental landscape. Did you load it up, the whole set? Hold the box, okay. We didn't load up the, the working drive that we submitted? Okay. They were, they were exhibit C or D in the, in the agenda.
They came in before Mayor, when she said that they would be
Before we proceed, I'll ask our city clerk to stop the speaking clock and allow staff to clarify the, um, the, the content of the presentation. Can you do me a favor and reset it at two minutes when we resume her points?
We asked the applicant to submit the PowerPoint slides. And we, we put up what the PowerPoint slides were submitted. In the agenda packet was the Dropbox information that you gave us at the council meeting, but was never told it was going to be part of the PowerPoint presentations, so they're not up there.
Do you all have access to it?
Yes.
Have you been able to review it?
It's, yes, it's part of the agenda report. It's up online and everybody can click on it because we made the PDF.
Uh, thank you so very much. And now we will resume. Wait two minutes.
So, um, this project that has sent the improvements to the building of the site will be a huge improvement to Broadway. As you know, Broadway is a gateway to the east side of Lemon Grove. And we want to establish a precedent for future development of that area. So I have to personally apologize. A lot of this blame has been put on the current board, the lack of progress. And our principal structural engineer, Matt Code in October, had long helped with it. And there was another engineer takeover. So a major portion of this renovation is the taking off of the whole roof and re-constructing it. So, um, your request for your extension, we have submitted. We will hope that the building department will start processing our, our plan schedule and we will work through comments and corrections with the city. I would hope that that process, as you said, it took six months to eight months. We think we can, could have done it in four or five months to get a building permit. And then I believe we will be in construction for 10 to 12 months. So if you get your list of this extension in time, we can get through the rest of the documentation. And if you do look in that Dropbox folder, you will see that the civil plan do include the street improvements, the lateral improvements, the sewer water improvements, and the other right-of-way, which are part of the construction permit, and the nasty plans, and then, um, there was another purpose that we can provide, like the rating plans in there. The demolition plans are in there, so a demo permit will go part of the building permit. So it's all, it's all there. It's all ready to be teed up and it's been submitted. And the criteria committee didn't realize that it was a building permit application in order to be substantially complete or substantial finished, but I apologize for that. It was mostly on my fault, so go a little lighter on, on Mr. Williams. So I appreciate your time tonight and I hope you approve this extension.
Okay, uh, thank you so very much. And, um, uh, now I want to begin with staff to see if you would like to make any further comments on this. Okay, as staff mentioned, there are
Sorry, no further comment.
Uh, thank you. And staff, at this time, does not have any further comments. And so I will move to our elected officials here. And we will do one more round of questions, but also this is the opportunity to provide comments if you have any comments. but also this is the opportunity to provide comments if you have any comments, and we'll start with Councilmember Leaning.
So this does feel a bit like deja vu, because we were here basically faced with this same situation a year ago. The Austin Law Group was here, representing the neighbors next door, and we made, we made a tough decision, because we wanted to give Mr. Williams another chance, but we made it very clear that Mr. Williams had one year to submit substantial progress. And in my, I'm, I'm very sorry, Mr. Williams, but in my estimation, you've taken eleven months, and I, my opinion is that this is not substantial progress. And, and, you know, I get the point, if you would walk, you, you still have until, we're not, this isn't the end of the road, I mean, you still have until April nineteen, and we gave you one year to complete, and it's not a matter of whether you make, you requested extra time a month in advance, that, that's not the point. The point is that you didn't make what I would consider substantial progress in one year. So I'm, I'm just, you know, everyone heard us say that, this snow wasn't here, but, you know, council said, we are going to stick to that one year, because it's not fair to the other applicants. That is my, you know, if you want us to be fair, well, we have to be fair to everybody, and it's not fair to the other applicants. They have been patiently waiting a year to see some progress, and there, and there hasn't been considerable progress. And I'm sorry that, and, you know, I, I don't even know who the other applicants are, I just know they're attorneys, because they were here a year ago. I've never met these people, I don't have any, I mean, if I had any personal feelings here, it would be towards, towards you, a person who I have had substantial contact with, not all positive, not all negative, but I, you know, I, you have done a lot in this community, and I appreciate that. But we made it, we made it very clear, and we gave you one year to, not, and we didn't say we gave you one year for substantial progress, we gave you one year to get all this stuff done. That's what we said last year, we made it very clear. So I'm, that, that's kind of what I'm thinking right now.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Councilmember LaBarre.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All that has been said, this still will boil down to the fact that the applicant still is within the timeframe to ask for an extension. I believe that the applicant has shown that they've done progress towards satisfying things in their CUP. I believe that the applicant has shown in comparison that other medical marijuana CUP applicants have done even less work than what they have. All that said, my takeaways from all this are the following. All I see is an attempt to target a business owner who has been openly critical of the quality of work city leadership has shown in running this city. And in an attempt to bully, harass, stonewall, and intimidate the applicant, city leadership continues to abuse the taxpayers by wasting their time and money by holding this ill-timed public hearing, though city leadership can try to set a narrative that only benefits elected council members' personal agendas. City leadership would love for the public to believe the applicant is not prepared and is costing the public money. However, and I want this to be really clear, this coming from me, a political insider, an elected official who gets to see the in and outs from a very non-close vantage point. I want you folks all to know here tonight that I'm of the very strong opinion that the only people robbing the public of its opportunity to benefit from medical marijuana dispensaries being open are the elected officials and high-level city staff who continue to show they are incapable of putting their ego and personal and the agendas aside to make decisions for the benefit of the public.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Councilmembers Nell.
Just wondering if I can ask some questions of the architect, please?
Yes, you may ask two questions, thank you.
When were you hired to begin work on this project?
Around the first quarter of twenty twenty-one.
Why did it take so long to, if it was first quarter of twenty twenty-one, so we're looking at like, what, before April of twenty twenty-one?
Right, well, the first phase of the project was to get the conditional use permit together.
Okay.
Right, so, so we, we did the land survey, the geographic survey, hired a surveyor, civil engineer, the land architect, and myself, got together, then redesigned the building, and we presented to the client. We had construction estimates, kind of, to kind of test whether we could afford the budget of what we're trying to propose, because we are proposing an extension every month, it's not just a paint job at all, right? She was submitted for the CUP, and that takes time to review, and became counsel, and then we were approved and did both.
Okay, and then what's been done since April of last year? You got me tired.
I worked as a mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and structural engineer, and continued to work with civil, and soils report, and the land architect, and in the process of all of that, this is a very complicated business. So we also worked together with the branding company, so we were looking at branding, merchandising, display development, we get demographics, because the design and the material design, and how we're going to circulate through this space, involved very much about your brand experience, and what you're going to deliver on it. So it's not as if you're just a customer that plans come popping out. We would take a look at the air, to take a look at the business, the profile, the branding, how it's going to look and can be perceived, right? And then the detailing of those drawings, and then we had the debacle with my engineer. So that's just a lot of time.
And how much have you been paid in this process for Mr. Williams?
I would say well over forty thousand dollars.
And if you could just provide your comments, and once your comments are complete, I will move on to Miracle Town Gaskell.
Thank you. So. I'm torn, I have a business that's sitting here in the wings, ready to go. I have another business that's ready to step up and follow through with the requirements. I have another business in the same field, right next door, and it's being held up, because this project hasn't moved forward. The architect was here during this process, where we gave a one-year time limit to get it all done, and instead of getting it all done by the end of this month, what they did was choose to start it now. And so that's, that's not very encouraging. I went through each of the applications where we've given extensions before, just so I could compare, I took this very seriously. I'm not here to mess with anybody's forty thousand dollars, I'm not here to mess, I know every dollar is precious, and I want to support businesses, but I also don't want to let one business occupy an, an area and just sit there on it, and sit on their rights. The law doesn't reward people who sit on their rights, the law doesn't reward people who are dilatory, taking their sweet time to get things pushed through. I have gone through the other applications, the other applications, the first one that was given an extension, had filed their building application within three months of getting the CUP application, three months, not twelve months. Then they had significant impediments, I met with city staff and asked them exactly what were these impediments, why did we agree to give them an extension? Then with the second application, they not only had a building permit application, but they had the actual building permit by the time that they requested an extension, and there were outside things, outside factors that were outside of their control, that were going to take additional time. In none of the other instances has somebody solely sent in a business application and expected that to be substantial compliance, not one of them. I did my homework, I did my research, and so I, I understand that you put significant investment into this, I understand how hard this was, but you sat on your rights for over a year, and I appreciate that your architect has, has absorbed some of the blame for the reasons why, but I, like, if you asked for the extension on March twentieth, you, I mean, nobody is new to this business, you are a businessman occupying this field, everybody knows that the business application is going to take thirty days just for them to be able to review it. You didn't turn in a, a building permit application thirty days out so that they could even have a review, even if it was ninety-five percent complete, we're hoping that it's a hundred percent complete, and everything was in line, so you could meet the April nineteenth deadline, but you didn't do that. And that's, that's not our fault, and you said that the city staff were there, and they sat with you as you went through those applications, that Mr. Trump thinks that the majority of yesterday and today, sitting through, going through with you the application process, and, and meeting with you, they took valuable city staff time to help you through that process, at no point did city staff receive an application beforehand and then stonewall you. That is not what happened here, this is my time to comment. So that's not what happened here. City staff didn't block you, city staff didn't stonewall you, you just didn't give city staff anything to even review or look at until this morning. And so I'm having a really hard time telling that other business that's ready to go, that has literally been sitting in the wings for three years, that's just next door to you, that is offering another same facelift, all the same benefits that you would offer to the city, but they would bring it to fruition, they would get it across the finish line. And so I'm really torn right now between what I've seen is delay, I sat, I might not have been up here the last time we were here, but I was down there in the audience, and I saw what happened then, and so I heard the same admonitions from council, you needed to get this done in a year, and I didn't hear anything from you, in fact, the first thirteen minutes of your discussion at the beginning was something totally irrelevant, not before us, and I was waiting to hear answers from you. I wanted to hear why it was delayed, I wanted to hear how much money you had expended, I wanted to hear all the bases for your delay, and give excuse, acknowledge it, and tell us how you were going to deliver in the future, and that's not what you did, and it's a shame. So those were my thoughts for the moment.
Thank you so very much, and Mayor of Town Gaskell?
Well, I have to, I have to say, Councilmember Snow has, has said a lot of the things that that I would want to say. I, yeah, I, I think that the, the applicant has every right to ask for an extension, city staff has every right to not recommend the extension. And council has, you know, I think, I think that, I think it's safe to say the council has given Mr. Williams even better than fair treatment. Yeah, I, I, I keep hearing that the project is ninety-five percent complete, or that ninety-five percent of the requirements have been met, okay? If, if, if that, if that's the case, that then it would be a hundred percent complete by the deadline. Yeah, I don't know, I, I don't really know what ninety-five percent means, but, but when I see all the things that haven't been done, I have to say that I don't see the project ni, I don't see this, this expectation as ninety-five percent fulfilled, and, and, and I think, I think there's an interesting question about, about how much time should be, should be allowed, I, the, the idea of giving another year is, 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 to me, would be completely out of the question. If there was some smaller incremental time that made sense, I, I, I might consider it, but honestly, you know, when I think of, of like five months, and I think, well, if they'd asked for five months in October, I mean, what happened between, between April and October? If they'd asked for five months in October, I think five months would have been perfect. Of course, you do a little, yeah, you can do that with your fingers. And, yeah, so, so, you know, and, and I would be willing to consider a smaller incremental time if, if, if council members, I think that's appropriate, but my sense is, my, my sense is, is that we, we've given enough time, and we haven't seen enough results. The architect, the architect is the best speaker, okay? So in the future, lead with the architect, more from the architect probably would help, but to be honest, it probably wouldn't make a difference in the decision that the council's going to make. But I will say that the architect, when she spoke, made more sense, and, and because she was speaking to the important points of what we need to cover. So, yeah, I'm, I'm just looking at the, the, you know, the, the paper trail goes back to twenty nineteen, and, and we just haven't seen enough, and, and, and if, if council members wanted to consider a, a smaller incremental time, I'd be open to considering it, but I'm also opening to not, if council members aren't inclined to consider a smaller incremental time, I think that, that there is just, there is adequate justification for denying the, the extension altogether, and I, and I want to emphasize, I, I really want to emphasize that council isn't doing this to the applicant, okay? The applicant has a deadline, and it's true that, that, that we're not at the deadline yet, okay? If the project was ninety-five percent complete, then, or, or the, you know, the process needed was ninety-five percent complete, then it would be possible to do the five percent of the remaining time, logically. But, but, but the, nobody's, you know, you, you know, I, no, nobody's doing anything unfair to the applicant, okay? The applicant is asking for more time, the council's considering whether more time would be justified, okay? And as far as that, whether this is an appropriate agenda item, I didn't put it on the agenda, the mayor didn't put it on the agenda, okay? I, I, the, the, it's on the agenda because the applicant is asking for an extension, and we're considering whether an extension is, 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 is a good move, okay? We, I, I think I speak for everybody, certainly speak, but I would speak for myself, that I would be pleased if the deadline came and the work was done. And, 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 and as far as us using our time, we have to consider what comes before us, and I hope, and I hope we consider everything carefully. So that's, that's basically where I am, I'd be open to a compromise, I'm not sensing that there is one, but, but, but I sure appreciate all the, the, all, all, all the, the faction commentary that's been provided, thank you.
Thank you, and I will, I will leave this. And I will, as well, the sentiment of the Mayor Protem here. I want to get from staff clarification of how we got here. Because there were comments made that it was the council members, the politics, that brought us here to the platform. But honestly, that is not the case. That's misinformation. And so, I know that there's a municipal code involved with that. But please, for the record, lay that out of how we got here, where we are today, what triggered us to be here with an agenda item regarding this particular marijuana dispensary. And I think that it has to do with the municipal code.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is before you because the applicant requested a time extension on March 20. I explained to the applicant the process for time extension. You submitted a time extension application, which you did, signed by the owner of the property and one of the owners behind it, and with a fee. And so we scheduled this item on tonight's agenda because your next agenda in two weeks is completely full. So, we have to act, really act quickly. I gave the applicant a deadline to get the application to us so we could put it on the agenda tonight, so that we could prepare the public notice and post it in the newspaper and mail out the notices to all property owners within 1,000 feet, which is a requirement for a city council public hearing on a dispensary. So this item is before you tonight because the applicant requested it and the staff accommodated the applicant as best we could to get this before you, before the CUP expires on April 19.
Thank you so very much. And I've heard lots of dollar signs put on the record regarding the investment of moving this project forward. For clarification here, if this appeal, if this request is not approved tonight, what will happen with the funding that was paid to the city of Lemon Grove?
Well, given that the building permit and landscape plan were submitted just incomplete, there was a $120 fee for the landscape plan review and the building permit was about $2,400 for a plan check fee based on the square footage and type of construction. If the applicant, depending on the council's decision tonight, if it's denied, I think we could refund that, those application fees to the applicant because we would not have even started on the plan check.
Thank you so much for providing the clarification for that. And I just want to make sure regarding the fees or funding that's associated with this particular project, would it be all fees or just the fees paid today if the agenda item was not approved by the elected officials? Would those fees go back to the applicant?
Just the fees that were paid this morning for the plan check, landscape plan. There is a $500 fee for a CUP extension application and that covers the cost of public noticing, the mailing, and the staff time to get this to you this evening for your consideration. So it would be just the plan check fee and the landscape fee because we haven't even started on that review.
Thank you so very much. And those are my questions. And I do not have any comments at this time. And so, we do have the opportunity now to close the public hearing. And so I'd like to get a motion to close the public hearing.
I'd like to move to the close of public hearing.
Do we have a second?
All second.
We have a motion and a second. I'll ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Aye.
Councilmember LaBaron?
Councilmember LaBaron?
Aye.
Councilmember Snow?
Nay.
Mayor Protem Gastel?
I'm a little torn because would it be possible to hear what Councilmember Snow wants to keep it open?
You would have to make a motion to table and reopen that portion of the hearing. So the motion right now, before all votes are taken, would be to table and return to discussion in order to determine that.
Is there maybe a friendly amendment? I really don't really care what's to come to say.
Well, why don't we make the motion to table?
I motioned, I'd like to motion that we table.
Is there a second? I'll second that.
And for clarification with the city attorney, we were in the middle of a vote on a motion. So, are we tabling that vote and then segueing to, I'll say like an alternative motion?
It's reopening what, it's reopening the open session so that you can discuss the nay vote, is my understanding. And so the motion that's on the table would be tabled for the moment, set aside, so that you can discuss the nay vote. And then you can return to the motion that was tabled in order to determine that vote.
And for the record, we do not need a vote in order to table the motion.
You do need a vote to table the motion. You have a motion and a second, so you can vote.
Okay, thank you very much. And so, we do have a motion and a second. I'll ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Aye.
Councilmember LaBaron?
Aye.
Councilmember Snow?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Gastel?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Thank you so very much. And now I'll turn this over to Councilmember Snow to provide her comment.
So, just for clarifications, and if there's an option to do, as Councilmember Gastel had suggested, of a alternative scheduling or something short of a year, is that something that we can continue to do while or consider while we are doing our votes? Or do you have to do that in this portion? After the public hearing is closed, there will be a period of time for deliberation. Because during that time of deliberation, then you would make suggestions for a motion, share your feelings about the vote, where you're headed. If you have questions for your colleagues, that would be the time to do that. And so after the public hearing is closed, you can make those feelings known. Thank you. Is that the reason for your nay vote?
And I'll take it with Councilmember Mendoza.
Do you want to bring back that tabled motion?
Yes.
So please, please make the motion one more time.
Oh, I'll move to close the public hearing.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And I'll ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Aye.
Councilmember LaBaron?
Aye.
Councilmember Snow?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Gastel?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Thank you so very much. Now, that we have closed the public hearing, it is time to make a motion on this particular item. So, we do have a recommendation of that. It is actually on the slide, but I'll check in. Before we get to the motion, we will deliberate. So I'll start with Councilmember Mendoza.
I have no further comments at this moment.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to say, I'll say, I'll start by saying first that there's issue with the fact that city staff would even let another MMD, African marijuana dispenser, apply for permits at a location if there was already an MMD in the works right next door. People have gotten up and spoke in opposition because they too have filed for permits from MMD, literally filed for an MMD right next to the applicant in spite of the applicant having already applied for permits. Why city staff let that happen? I'm not sure why that is. That should not have been allowed. The law says that there can't be two MMDs next to one another and further that it's first come, first served for who has a place holding right. The applicant applied first, yet staff and council are trying to knock him from his rightful first place spot. And I have to ask, why is that? It's retaliation. It's personal dislike of the applicant. It's to fuel your own tricks and satisfaction you all get from being able to squash the dreams of an African-American man trying to enter a legitimate industry and succeed.
Well, I just want to say that was incorrect because what happened is the applicant had applied and on January 12, his CUP application was incomplete and was not approved prior to the one year of expiration. And he reapplied. But in that time period, I believe that the Hermes and Toma filed, and I, all those dates aren't clear. Oh, no, they submitted an application on December 9 of 2021. And that was when the applicant's, Mr. Williams' original application was incomplete and had expired. So, we didn't allow them to apply at the same time. They applied in that window. And we just, you just don't remember that we discussed that in depth last year.
Thank you. And I'll move forward to Councilmember Snow.
So, I've taken a look at this. I, again, I don't understand the comments from Councilmember LaBaron. I don't know where they're coming from. I'm new to this seat. I had taken this, spent a lot of time actually taking a look at the application. I went through the prior applications. I spent time, hours, literally with city staff and with the city manager going through. So I made sure I understood exactly what was going on in this. I don't have any personal feelings towards Mr. Williams whatsoever. What I do care about, what I do have feelings for, is making sure that Lemon Grove is successful for our businesses. What I want to make sure is that everybody has an equal opportunity to be able to bring their businesses to fruition. These are, I'm not really considering the competition, but it's out there. It's the difference between the veterinarian building hospital or whatever that's going to be. The difference is that there's no competing veterinary hospital that has to wait for these people to get their extensions done. There's literally somebody next door who's waiting to bring serious sales tax revenue into this city that could help us with a lot of our problems. And they have to sit on the sidelines until this player decides they're worn out. And the problem is that if you, if you don't, if you're not diligent, if you take your time and you let your rights expire, then the next person gets that chance. And that's what happened the first time. They, he left a window open and they came into that window. This is a lucrative business and there's multiple people that are interested. And the problem is that Lemon Grove has very few areas where you can put a medical marijuana dispensary. It's very narrowly limited, like at both ends of the town and over back behind north. And that's it. And so, yes, the competition is going to be literally next door because those are the only places where you can put one of these medical marijuana dispensaries. And so, do I reward the person who's been, had literally years to get this stuff put together? And who's had over a year to, or almost a year to get their CUP application done? Over the people who have been diligent and have been very proactive in sliding in there when the opportunity came and have been ready and willing to act from the time that they can, that we know as soon as they could get their hearing and get this process started? So, it's difficult. I also, you know, feel for a business owner who's invested significant money in this. But $40,000 is a lot of money. But when you look at how much it's going to cost to get this thing across the finish line, it's probably a low percentage, single digit percentage of what it's going to actually cost to get this thing through. And so, I am, the thing is, is I don't think, having seen how long it takes to get a permit, like, this is, and I know this isn't Mr. Williams' first rodeo. Like, you don't submit a perfect application. Like, that just doesn't happen. And as is highlighted by the Austin law firms, there's a number of items that need fixing before it can hit the finish line and you can get the building permit. And so, I don't think they can get this done in less than a year at this. I don't think a three-month extension could get there. But I'm happy to hear other people's opinions that they think that something's short of a year. But I think giving him another year would just result in the exact same situation we're in right now. And then they, poor other people, haven't been able to do their business for yet another year. And Lemon Grove's lost out on another year of revenue.
Thank you so very much. And next, we have Mayor Protem Gastel?
I said point of order. You're not going to recognize me?
I will ask the audience to please keep your comments to a minimum as we are conducting the business of the city. And if you can adhere to that, that'll be great. I'll turn over to Mayor Protem Gastel. Thank you.
Can we clarify, is the public allowed to bring a point of order?
No, a point of order is a tool for the city council to use when they would like a clarification on an issue that has come up before the body. I'd like to add, sorry, that the public meeting is closed. And so there are no comments allowed from the public at this point.
Right, right. Yeah, you know, I put out sort of a tentative feeler about a possible compromise on the time. But I, you know, I'm not hearing it. I think that it's really clear that we want something positive to happen with this property. And for me, the big question is, are we doing the right thing by extending time? Or are we doing the right thing by allowing someone else to work on the property? And like I said, I was open to possibly considering a shorter timeframe, but I'm not hearing, I'm not hearing the case for a shorter timeframe. I'm not hearing the case for any timeframe other than the existing deadline. And I'm ready to, I'm ready to- other than the existing deadline. And I'm ready to, I'm ready to support staff's recommendation. Um, and because I, uh, I, I, I think that we've done, we've done everything we can to be fair. And, and I think we've reached a point where if the applicant can't do the work in the time that was given, then somebody else needs the chance to do it.
Thank you so very much. And as we consider a motion, I'll just kind of put this out there. Um, number one, number one, um, I'm thinking about the future of the city and the tax dollars that can be generated. And do we want to hold up the opportunity to receive revenue, um, at this time? So that's under consideration. Number two, what I have under consideration is there's a limited number of spaces here in the city of Lemon Grove for a marijuana dispensary. And is it a priority to ensure that those limited number of spaces are actively producing tax dollars that will go into our general fund? Because there are so many needs for our city, but those needs can't be met unless we have actual tax dollars. And we know, we know based on data that, um, the dispensaries that are currently operating in our city generate tax dollars. And those tax dollars are helping to not only maintain the city, but as we consider, as we continue to move, as we continue to receive more, will help to improve the city. And then, um, in this instance, legally, legally, um, it's at the discretion of this body, this government body. And so there, in terms of laws or, or policies, um, truly, it is up to us to, us right here, the city council, to make the, to make a decision as to whether or not we will support or deny the pill. One thing that I know, um, it is important to operate in good faith. Um, and to consider whether or not progress has been made within a year to try and bring this business to life. So, um, those are my comments at this time, as we move forward to consider a motion. And so I'll look to my colleagues here to see if we have a motion.
I'll, I'll move that we deny the request of time extension and adopt a resolution, um, denying, uh, time extension and conditional use permit, uh, 200 dash 001, located at 8280 Broadway.
Thank you so very much. And do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. I'll ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Aye.
Councilmember LaBaron?
Councilmember LaBaron, no.
Councilmember Snow?
Aye.
Mayor Portem Gastro?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Thank you so very much. Next is item number... Uh, before we move forward to item number four, I will turn this over to our city manager, Lydia Romero. Thank you.
Madam Mayor and City Council, it is that time in which, under our council policies and goals, we did check in with the city councils to see if they want to continue with the remainder of the agenda. We have both the sidewalk master plan and the PMP. We have consultants here to do the presentation. I was told that the presentation would take ten minutes each, so cumulative of twenty minutes perhaps. Um, and we do have, have, have a closed session. If the council's okay to stay, we're probably going to be here in open session for probably another hour. Um, so we, if council likes the suggestion, we can forego our reports and go straight into closed sessions. Um, at this time, um, after we have the two reports. That's what the council, um, wishes. Uh, thank you so very much for performing the check-in. Uh, what I do support is moving forward with the agenda item number four and item 1B, which is pulled from the consent agenda, foregoing our city council reports and moving directly into closed session. And so I'd like to check in to see, uh, if everyone is in support of that. Okay. I, I support moving ahead with the, um, you know, we have a full agenda for, um, for our next meetings. So, um, I, I support, uh, moving ahead with the agenda items as, as we are. And we can skip, uh, council comments for now. I'm good with it?
Cause I, I, I'm hearing that we should hear from the council, but I think that the agenda items also...
There isn't deliberation. No, I, I, we're just saying our coun- our council reports on... We're going to pass over those, correct?
And you want, you want to do the rest?
Thank you. And so, um, well, in that case, move forward with item number four, which is acceptance of the sidewalk master plan. And I'll turn this over to our public works director, Izzy Merrius.
Good evening, mayor members of the city council. Uh, we're pleased to present to you this evening the acceptance of the sidewalk master plan. Uh, the city currently contains approximately sixty miles of sidewalk system. Management of the sidewalks is causing significant resources. One of the challenges facing the city's ability to develop a comprehensive sidewalk maintenance program is the lack of information on sidewalk inventory, condition assessment. For these reasons, the staff is authorized to pursue the completion of the sidewalk master plan. On May 17th, 2022, the council awarded an agreement, an agreement to Chen Ryan Associates for civil engineering to develop sidewalk master plans. And over the past year, the team at Chen Ryan Associates and Wood Rogers have executed a comprehensive sidewalk master plan, which includes a sidewalk inventory, condition, condition assessment, and right-of-way inventory. Here this evening to provide the findings of the sidewalk master plan is Catherine Sholi and Glenn Parker from Wood Rogers. Also here with us this evening is contracted city engineer Ed Walton, who, uh, carried this project, uh, through, through last year.
Thanks, Izzy. Hello, everyone. Thank you for the time tonight to go through this project. Again, my name is Catherine Sholi, and I'll be getting through the process of this project and the findings from it. So first we'll go over the goals, the different phases of the project, the data maintenance and funding alternatives as, um, the city staff takes the results forward. And then we also did a walkability study. And then I'll quickly go through the GIS platform that we made for this presentation. So the goals of the presentation, the goals of this project was to have an inventory of the public sidewalk network, assess the condition of this sidewalk network, and then build a foundation for the city staff to be able to take this into the future and recommend improvements. And we also wanted to identify funding sources, be able to fund all of the, the recommendations and the defects that we found. So phase one of the project was mostly done on the computer, and it was basically developing the sidewalk network. The staff, the, the city did not have this inventory, so we started from scratch. And through this process, we, uh, quantified sixty miles of sidewalk as well as sixty-five miles of sidewalk gaps within the city. Also through this process, we, um, found different kind of endpoints for each sidewalk, which included curb ramps, crossings, as well as gutters. And all of this was done in a program called ARC GIS, which the city already uses for other inventory. So everything that we're making is able to kind of integrate into the rest of the system that the city has. And they can continue to edit it as, as time goes on. So after having all of that inventory in the computer, we did a field survey. So a field crew went out and walked all sixty miles of Lemon Grove public sidewalk and quantified and looked at all of the defects, all the endpoints, as well as visually inspected for ADA compliance. And some of the examples on the right-hand side are showing the different defects that we looked at. So that's vertical faults, falling, obstructions, and horizontal faults. And then each of, on the, kind of the picture in the middle is, shows different endpoints and the crossings that we, uh, found during our desktop analysis. So the fieldwork was born to look at all the defects and take a photo of all of them. And then also quantify, or also kind of describe what each endpoint was. And again, this is all done in GIS, so it's able to be in one spot. And all of the photos that were taken is also connected to all of this data. So in the future, instead of having somebody maybe complain about an obstruction or a vertical fault, um, there's already a photo for that defect there. So it definitely will save time in the future. And so this is just some definitions of what we looked at, so the different defects, the different endpoints, and then visually inspecting for ADA compliance. Um, so again, there's an example of a T endpoint of the sidewalk. And again, like I said, this was all done in part of the field inspection. And, uh, every day when somebody went out, it was all, it was, um, checked on the computer at the end of the day. And again, everything is in one spot, so you don't have to look at an Excel document and something on the computer. It's all in one location to be able to edit in the future. And so with all of this inspection, we came up with around forty-two hundred defects in the city. And the picture's a little difficult to see on the right, but that's a map that shows all of the, the points that we got during this field inspection. And the defect that we have highlighted is the vertical fault. Because looking at sidewalks, we're really kind of looking at the walkability and the usability of these facilities. And a vertical fault is kind of the largest challenge when it comes to walking because there's, you know, different trip hazards or being able to use that. So we split the vertical faults into three different sets. So it's half inch to one inch, one inch to three inch, and then over three inches. And the vertical faults were about twenty-four percent of the total defects of the city. And so with all this information, it's, you know, what, what are we going to do it? How are we going to solve these issues? And what we came up with was either repairing, replacing, cleaning, or removing. And so in GIS, again, you guys, this is my favorite program if you haven't found that out yet. Within that, we put in what our recommended solution is. Um, so you kind of see where it says replace or repair. Um, and so that's our recommendation for that specific defect. And then we, to help city staff, uh, decide what they want to fix, we assigned it a prioritization score. But like I said, vertical faults are kind of the largest challenge when it comes to walkability. So that has the highest score of ten. Then cleanliness has a low score of two. This is just extra information to help staff decide what should, what is the highest priority to fix. And then at the bottom, we have unit costs that we developed once, as we were talking to city staff. And these are costs based off of current bids, current history that we're aware of. And all of this is applied into GIS, so the cost of each defect is available, which will come into play later. But as time goes on and as unit costs maybe go up, depending on whatever's happening in the world, those values can be updated. So with all of the defects and the costs that we've applied in, I think at the time that we did this is twenty-twenty-two dollars. It's going to be about four and a half million dollars to, for permanent construction costs to solve these defects. And the map on the right, um, a little difficult in this light, but that shows the different prioritization of all of the defects within the city. So yellow would be a low score, and ten would be the high score. And it's just a matter of connecting it to which defect is, makes the sidewalks harder to walk, um, and kind of giving the information for what should be prioritized. And so moving forward with this, is that it? It's all in GIS, so city staff is aware of that. And it, all of this information can be integrated into GIS software. And what's important about that is there's a site called City Works where work orders can be made. And these work orders, um, you know, will be the items that are approved. Um, so having everything in GIS with the cost associated with it, it can be easily updated or uploaded onto the site to create these work orders for improvement. And then future work can utilize these results for different projects. So anything from a sidewalk inspection program to maybe safe routes to school or bundling different improvements together into a larger project to be able to apply for grants. And with the grants, as part of this project, we did come up with different funding alternatives. So we recommend that you don't just improve one part of a sidewalk, but you take multiple defects and create a larger bundled project. And then also look at multiple funding sources and potentially create a multi-fold project. So that would be maybe a street and...